Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Assouias Town Council Committee of the Whole Meeting, May twentieth, twenty fourteen, oh nine hundred in council chambers. The first item up would be the agenda. Looking at any late items, any late items coming forward. Hearing none, that agenda will be adopted as presented by consensus. Going into the first item that would come up would be delegations. We are going to have a deferral for possibly ten minutes on Mr. Bob Gibney's presentation on the Smolke Mine Hydro Project. So while we're waiting for Bob, who got delayed, there was, I believe, some traffic issues between Oliver and Assouias. We will move into D Business One, Employee Recognition Policy. Ms. Van Veenen?
No, I'll take it.
Okay, great. Mr. Remanko, CAO, please.
Thank you, Mayor Wells. The twenty fourteen business plan provides direction to review and develop operating policies that are contemporary, reflect the values of the community, and develop a positive corporate culture. A long-term trend in human resource and organizational development is the implementation of service recognition program policy. Currently, our employees contribute to the success of our organization and community in so many ways. An effective recognition solution can help you acknowledge, motivate, and reward the people who make a difference to our organization. Currently, no employee recognition policy is in place for the town of Assouias. As of January first, twenty fourteen, our organization has the following service terms of employees approximately thirty years plus, two, twenty to twenty-nine years plus, three, ten to nineteen years plus nine, six to nine years plus nine, and five years, eight. Although the policy states no reward is cumulatively retroactive, I would suggest that an initial recognition be applied in twenty fourteen. So I've attached a policy that provides for kind of categories, and you'll see by the policy, it's broken into five-year increments, and for the first five years, person is with here, they'd get a, we'd develop an Assouias Service PIN. When they reach the ten-year mark, they would get a ten-year service PIN plus a gift valued at a hundred dollars. Fifteen years would be another type of service PIN with a hundred and fifty dollars. Twenty years service PIN with two hundred, and every, for every five years over twenty, there would be a service PIN plus a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar memento of recognition. So this is being proposed by the administration for council's consideration and feedback at this particular point in time, and then, once council has their input into it, we can bring it back to council for a formal resolution to implement into our human resources policy.
Okay. Okay, council, please. Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I like the idea, and I think it's outlined pretty well here. Just one little question. The awards, a service PIN plus, the, is that an amount of money, or is that a gift of that value? I wasn't sure if it was cash, or if it was, if it was meant to be some particle value to something.
Yeah, we haven't really thought that far down the line. You know, sometimes organizations will have a catalog that people can choose from. You know, it may be, you know, I think some type of recognition from the organization is important, so I'm kind of leaning towards a memento as opposed to just, here's the cash. You know, it's, I think it's, it's a gift from the organization, should maybe speak to the organization.
Yes, I, I think that's a good point.
Counselor McCordough?
Yes, thank you. I had one question when I was looking at this. How much, if we did it this year, do you think it might cost? Because, and if somebody's worked eleven years and somebody's worked ten, they would both, my understanding is they'd both be awarded a ten-year certificate. Okay, that's, that's one thing. The other thing is, I think that these are all QP people, or most of them, and the, we've heard about the ten, ten percent shift, and I'm thinking that if we were going to give them some type of an award, that we would give them a gift certificate to shop local. They're, they're the ones that are, that are super keen on this, QP, and it's just a thought.
Yeah.
But that might be a good idea.
Counselor Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only to comment on how lucky are we to see these numbers and how we've been able to, you know, create a work environment where these folks can stay here this long, thirty-plus years to have two employees. I mean, that's incredible. And then, the other numbers are just, just darn good, in my opinion, so, yeah, I'm really in favor of this. I think that's a good thing. Anything we can do that's positive and recognizes the long service, I'm keen to do it.
Thanks, and I'm, I'm strongly in favor of these programs. I think they do a lot for the organization, for morale, and really help into that team building. However, I'm not, I don't like the cash component, so it was good to hear Counselor McCordough say, I mean, what a, what a great opportunity to get into Counselor, Counselor Rhodes' territory on shopping local. I can certainly see that. When you look at an organization the size of the town, it's hard to have, I was at Tellus, we had a catalog, and you went through and looked at what was appropriate for the number of years you're being recognized for. We're small. However, we have, we have wonderful golf shirts with cannabis warmest welcome on it, we've got hats, shirts, and watches. We had some watches around here.
Yeah, we still have them.
Okay, okay. So, so there are some, some, something that, that may be there, so I'm really in favor of this. We just have to work out how that award looks.
Okay.
Counselor McCordough?
I just thought that it might be a good use for those dollars that you have. For nineteen seventy-six.
Sorry, that was a bit of an inside joke. In, in doing some housecleaning around our, some of our scattered corners, we came across five thousand, or approximately, one-dollar good in the town of Assouias coins from nineteen seventy-six, and they expired in nineteen seventy-six. But we were just going, oh, what are we going to do with these? Anything else? We have the information that we need.
Okay, so what I'll do is, we'll, we'll bring it back, and we'll provide some options relative to the, the cash that would, would be implemented, potentially within the policy. Also, take a look at developing a budget figure. If, if we were to implement this year, for example, we, we potentially would do this maybe at Christmas, as part of our Christmas party or something like that, and we'll, we'll bring a budget figure for implementation.
And I guess just one more comment, if I may. If we, you could end up with having one, two, three, four, five, six pins. It might be a little bit of overkill on getting, if you were getting a pin every time, they sort of are going to lose something, so I'm, I'm sure there'll be skilled people bringing back the actual award part of the, of the program.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Okay, next item up, we'll continue with business. I see Mr. Gibney is here, but we'll just keep you on the hot seat for a minute, Bob?
That's perfectly fine. I'm here just in time for the progressive positive discipline. I'm happy to be late.
And that is, that is the business item, progressive discipline policy. CAO, Remanko, please.
Thank you, Mayor Wells. Again, the twenty fourteen business plan provided direction to review and develop the operating policies that are contemporary, reflect the values of the community, and develop a positive corporate culture. An emerging trend in human resource and organizational development is the implementation of a progressive discipline policy. Just as background, progressive discipline is an employee discipline system that provides a graduated range of responses to employee performance or conduct problems. Disciplinary measures range from mild to severe, depending on the nature and frequency of the problem. All employee disciplinary processes are based on the principle that employer's disciplinary response should be appropriate and proportionate to the employee's conduct. The benefits of a progressive discipline program. Using progressive discipline can help employees get back on track, done right. Progressive discipline can allow managers to intervene and correct employee behavior at the first sign of trouble, enhance communication between the managers and the employers, help managers achieve higher performance and productivity from their employees, improve employee morale and retention by demonstrating that there are rewards for good performance and consequences for poor performance, avoid expensive replacement costs, ensure consistency and fairness in dealing with employee problems, and lay groundwork for fair, legal, defensible employment termination for employees who cannot or will not improve. Progressive discipline also helps to avoid the consequences of allowing workplace problems to continue unchecked. If you don't intervene, the employees may not know what, know that his or her dis, behavior of action are unacceptable. Not only will you have to suffer a loss of opportunity to help the employee improve, but your company will continue to suffer the consequences of the employee's problem, which could result in reduced productivity and profits, quality control problems, lost opportunity for customers, and low employee morale and higher turnover. Using progressive discipline appropriately will also help your company stay out of legal trouble. Progressive discipline requires you let employees know what you expect, to be fair, consistent, and objective in imposing discipline, to include employees in the process of improvement, and to document your actions and decisions properly. Attached is a progressive disciplinary policy that has been adapted by the, not adapted yet, but we adapted it by the administration and was reviewed by the union. Both union and exempt employees have reviewed the content of the policy and support of implementation to achieve benefits provided earlier in the report. So again, bringing this to council, if there's any feedback that council may want to input into the policy. The policy provides for progressive discipline. Again, the, the first, the first, it's basically in four levels. The, the first one not being really disciplinary, and that is just a verbal awareness of concern. Usually, when an employee does something that is kind of not within, is not appropriate, you provide them a verbal warning. It moves to a letter of expectation, then a written warning, and then a final warning with possible suspension or termination, depending on the severeness of the situation. And in the policy, there are numerous types of activities that may occur in an organization. And again, this is not to say that this list is exhaustive, but there are situations that commonly occur within organizations. So we've outlined what would be our responses. Again, the, as an employer, we have the response to jump levels in a situation, depending on the severity of the situation, and as the case with the union, although they're supportive of disciplinary policy, that does not preclude their collective agreement and their ability to, to go to, to agreements. Again, just some of the situations that we, we see potentially occurring.
Okay, thank you. I, I consider this to be another good management tool. It certainly has a lot of value for, for the corporation and for the employees. Sometimes, sometimes people get off the track, and this is, this is a, a good and fair way of working through the union with some of their guidance and expectations contractually. This is a good way for, for, for this to take place with, with the employees. And this would be sort of a standard. This is, this is a standard that we're not coming out of the box or anything.
No, this is, we, actually, we went through with the union on a, on a situation-by-situation basis and discussed what would be potentially an appropriate response. There was some give and take on both sides, relative to what we finally came up with, but I think there's a sense of fairness within the situations that are described here. Again, you know, if council wishes that, you know, if you looked at the individual situations and feel that our kind of negotiated way of going through it was not, was too hard or too soft, you know, we, we are looking for council's input as well.
I think it's, I think it's more important that it's there. You know, this was sort of a, I guess this would be a, a missing block in, in some, in some of the management tools for, for the corporation, so for the town, so, so I think this is a, this is a great addition, and, and, yeah, we'll get that worked through. And I'm not, I don't think anyone here is human resources expert, so it's pretty hard to start looking at one clause, you know, I saw a smoking issue or something here, you know, we can't pick and choose on all that, so. Counselor McCordough?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's a, it's a good one as well. I know that at the, at the Okanagan Regional Library, we're just sort of going through the same sort of issues, so I know that you've probably got ideas from lots of other places. I'm particularly comfortable with the fact that admin, union employees and exempt employees have already sort of accepted this and have worked through it. I'm just wondering, legally, is there, are there any issues? I think I saw something in here, but I'm just wondering whether you need to, to check that, or is that?
I don't, in terms of legality, the, you know, there's nothing here that is, is contrary to any legislation.
Good.
So I, in terms of a legal review, I don't think we would need a legal review.
Okay, thank you, good.
Counsel, Counselor Ryan?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I, I would agree that it's very timely to have this, and I, and I think, you know, the progressive discipline level examples are really good, especially if you work those through. I had just one question, and it was on the, in the description section under Appeals F, and it relates to the second paragraph where you're talking about a department director feeling they've been wrongly accused or disciplined and so on, and they may appeal to council through the CAO. And right at the top of the, the third page of your text there, it says, "The CAO may review or respond," or, sorry, review and respond, "or forward to council all written appeals from exempt employees within fourteen business days." I wasn't sure what that meant, because you're, you're basically saying, review and respond or forward to council. I wasn't sure whether you were going to review and respond to the, to the director, at what point council would get it, or might get it, or?
Well, just in terms of process, if, if somebody felt that I did not treat them properly, they wouldn't have to make an appeal in writing. I would take a look at it, and if there's the sense of that I couldn't deal with it, then I would bring it to, to council. You know, an appeal is an appeal. I would, I would be reviewing their sense of what the appeal is all about. If I thought, you know, that they were right, and in the, in the sense of their evaluation, then I would kick it back to them and say, okay, that's, that's fine. If I felt that the situation, I, I was right, then we would go to the third party, which would be council.
Okay.
Yeah, and, but again, within fourteen-day period.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Nice to have the timeline there.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, thanks, CAO, that's moving ahead on that. So this will come back for?
Yeah, we'll come back for council approval at another meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gibney, going to have a presentation on the Smolke Mine on the Fortis, Smolke Mine Hydro Project. We thank you for coming, Bob. We've been hearing a lot about it, but really don't have any information, so it's good to have this overview.
I may have a, I just brought a stick and a magnet.
Yeah, I didn't have, I wasn't expecting a floppy drive, so I don't have the laptop set up. I can try on here, but I don't, won't be able to have any email shows that are going to work.
I can, I can just go through this thing. Sorry about that. It was, I had Ruth, I had one of the employees come down or talk down here, but regardless, so this is going to work.
I could try to just put it.
Well, let's give it a, excuse us on Granicus while we tune this.
Yeah, sorry about that. Sorry for being late.
Oh, that's.
It's a day of apologies.
Okay.
Well, the good news, Stu, is if you're at the regional district meeting this Thursday, you'll get to see it again.
Okay, thank you.
We did see Ruth at the, and talked to her a little bit about that at the SOGA conference.
Yeah, Ruth is actually leaving our company end of this month. She's going to, she's going to work for Shell Oil at Kidinac.
Wow, wow.
LNG stuff.
Mm-hmm. So a bit of a, bit of a raid going on, it would sound like. Headhunters.
No, I think it was, you know, it was just a career choice.
Yeah.
She's been in this game for twenty years, so.
Okay.
You know, at some point in time, you know, you've got to decide to get rid of it.
I have no password.
No, usually what we do is send a file down, like, so that.
Right, right.
I think Ruth just thought I could come down and just talk about it, but it's always nice to have a few pictures.
It is, it is. And as, as I say, we're looking forward to that information, because it really, it really does, does affect Assouias more than.
One of the, one of the problems is, I think you can appreciate, but a project like this, if you want to get out early, information is really sketchy, because projects go no-go, and then people think you're not telling them everything and all the rest of it.
Right.
But you wait until you've got a first project, and it's just a balance.
Right, right. And of course, as we're looking at, at spring fresh at time, it's all about the Smolke Mine River and how it behaves, is what happens to the level of Assouias Lake.
Yeah, well, the hydrology, you just pull the water right up here.
Might have success here.
Well, the good news is you have got people lined up to back door wanting to talk about chickens in the municipality and stuff.
Right.
Not yet.
Thanks, Bob.
Now, Luke's is struggling with that, too.
Are they?
Ducks, ducks is the new one.
Ducks.
We have a goose here, didn't you? Do you need that?
We have many.
Was it a goose that caused the?
Yes, yes.
Like a tame goose, wasn't it?
Yeah. Well, par, partial.
Partial, tame.
Yeah. But I think it scared the, I think it scared the feral cats away, so.
It scared them all downtown.
Put the raccoons and the skunks, there's a ton of them.
Yeah, it's only about a nine, nine slide.
Okay.
Ah, there we go.
Success, success.
Success.
Yeah, if you just knock off the comments, or the jacks, too, I don't care that up there.
Up here?
No.
Where are you?
I'm right behind you.
There you go.
It's there, if you just knock that off, then it gets.
Oh, there, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't care about that other stuff?
I don't care what it was.
No, do you want me to?
Yeah, you're going to be like.
I guess we should turn it off.
Yeah, it's like Fernando.
Yes, it's a little.
I'll sit right here.
I can see it.
Okay, good.
Okay, for the, for the Granicas viewers out there, sorry about that, but I'm quite thrilled that we had tech, technical success from Ms. Van Veenen. We, we like that, so. Mr. Gibney, please.
Yeah, so thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to come today to talk to you very briefly about a pending project that we have on the go, the Smolke Mine Hydro Electric Project. Please. I think most of you are familiar with Fortis BC, but as this project is being funded solely by our shareholder, Fortis Inc. Here we go. As this project is being funded solely by our shareholders, Fortis Inc., I just thought I'd give a brief description of who Fortis Inc. is. It's a Canadian company, head office, St. John's, Newfoundland. Parent, Fortis Inc. is a parent company of Fortis Generation and Fortis BC Gas and Electric, plus a number of other holdings throughout Canada, the States, and Caymans. Fortis Inc., Fortis Generation are inv, investor, invested fund, sorry, investor-funded. Gas or electric customers do not pay for Fortis Inc. or Generation projects. Rate are not impacted on this project at all. We're not going to the commission, we're not asking our customers to fund us. So if you happen to be a shareholder in Fortis Inc., part of your money may be used for this project. Fortis Inc. has expertise in owning and operating generation facilities throughout Canada, USA, and the Caribbean. The Winnita Dam in Trail, we're fifty-one percent owners of that dam, that's due to come online next year, and it appears to be on schedule. We also have commercial real estate of approximately two-point-seven million square feet, and we also currently hold about twenty-three hotel properties. Project overview, the project is intended to provide water storage and hydroelectric generation. The dam is approximately five-hundred-and-forty, five-hundred-and-forty-one feet high, and approximately five-hundred meters or sixteen-hundred-and-forty feet width at the widest part. The length of the reservoir is twenty kilometers, one-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand acre-feet of annual storage. The dam is constructed of a rolled compacted concrete with ungated spillway for flood control. Firm dispatchable capacity and energy. Now, the difference between capacity and energy, you may or may not be familiar with capacity, when we talk capacity, that's your demand, so like in cold months, or when your air conditioning is on, and you need that extra demand, that's when we're talking about capacity. Energy is like what we're enjoying right now, is just your normal base kind of load, and it's always the capacity that you pay for in the open market, and it's the hardest to ensure that you have adequate delivery of. We haven't decided what size this dam will, and generation facility will be yet. It could range from forty-five to sixty-five megawatts. Anything under fifty megawatts, you avoid certain environmental overview, but that's not the reason we would go under fifty. We just, at this point, don't know how big a dam, what the capacity should be. Two-hundred-and-five to two-hundred-and-twenty gigawatt-hours of average energy, annual energy. The dam's projected cost, and I'm sure this is going to be a moving target, is between three-hundred-and-fifty and four-hundred million dollars, construction costs, and these dates, I can tell you right now, are probably going to be totally erroneous. Construction started in the summer of twenty eighteen, and a proposed certain service date of twenty twelve. The reason I say that is, with any project like this, in the early stages, it's start, go, start, go, stop. We're working very closely with the Americans on water interest, et cetera, and that's part of the reason the actual project manager isn't with me today. They're going to Portland tomorrow to carry on some more conversations, and at the regional district meetings, Stu, if you are, do come to that, I'm going to have Doyle Samner, our executive vice president, who's in charge of this, Joseph Sukleman, who is the project manager, and I think you'll know Roger Mayer. Roger is helping, so, and myself, there'll be four of us there, we've got a team bus coming. And good thing about that idea, that group, is you'll be able to ask some in-depth questions that you'll be able to think about over the next couple of days. This is the proposed location. The red arrow at the top is actually heading towards Princeton. I know it's hard to orient, orientate yourself here, but we're, we, we hope to put the reservoir within the Copper Mountain Mine area, like, that's already disturbed land, it's a, it's a natural area for a reservoir. The bigger triangle there is the dam site, and then towards the bottom of the slide, that would be the reservoir. So the dam is the, is the red triangle, and then the reservoir would be coming towards.
And we're looking downstream.
You're looking, which way does that?
Downstream towards Princeton.
You're looking towards Princeton, that's correct.
Okay.
Some of the project benefits, water shaping to improve water availability to downstream users, you know, for recreational use, general water use, irrigation, people downstream would have a, a better year-round access as required. I think of particular interest to the town of Assouias is the flood risk reduction downstream on Assouias Lake. Because we can shape the water better, I don't think you would see the same kind of fresh out problems coming into the area here. Less flow variability, so in other words, in the wintertime, in the summertime, I should say, you're not, sometimes you can almost walk across Smolke Mine, and the summertime, I think there'll be a more, a better managed flow of the water. And potential water quality improvements, and base load renewable hydro generation. Some of the timelines with this project, First Nation Engagement, we started back when Chief Joe Dennis was chief of the Smolke Mine Band, talked about, you know, the poss, potential project. The engagement is ongoing, we're focusing primarily on the two Smolke. We're focusing primarily on the two Samilkamene Bands at this point. The pre-visibility study is completed. The British Columbia Environmental Office and permit initiation, that is complete, but we have not filed it. And I just wanted to go back to the First Nation engagement. The, the permit initiation, once we file that, it's, it's what's called a Section 10. And that is a very prescriptive environmental overview process and public engagement process that's done by the, that's dictated by the government. And once we trigger that, then it's, then it's full bore. And our problem is, we don't know if we have a project yet, so we don't want to get into that phase until we get some more certainty at the leading end. For example, when we did the Section 10 for the gas line project, it's currently on hold. Initially, we were dealing with about thirty-five bands. This project, we have identified, or the government has identified ten First Nation communities that we would have to engage and ultimately consult with. They go everywhere from the Upper Nicola Band down to obviously the Asoias Indian Band and Samilkamene Bands. The, complete the conceptual engineering mid-2014. That is still ongoing, and that's also going to be a big determining factor as to whether this project goes or not, is the engineering costs. The final investment decision will be made late next year. Unless something comes up where this project is temporarily shallow between now and then. Environmental certificate, the expectation is 2016. Of course, that depends on when we trigger the Section 10 order. Design and pre-construction complete end of 2017. Construction commencement 2018 and commissioning 2020. Once again, I'm going to say those last four dates are very, very fluid. Environment and, well, maybe we're done. Environment and archaeology. Fortis Generation, we're leading all the consultation and communication. SNC Lavalin, at Lavalin, are, they're leading the field studies and the coordination of the field work for First Nations and other work. We are actually considering hiring a local company to deal with the archaeological aspect because, you know, obviously they've got a lot of the, the local experience. We've already touched on this, the environmental assessment process. Now, this is a two-and-a-half-year process. And once again, we're in the, in the little red circle there. We have, our project description is completed, but we have not filed a requesting a Section 10 yet. And then as you go across the Section 10, the, the government gets that, and then that turns into a Section 11, which tells us how we have to go out and communicate with the public, both First Nations and municipalities. And then we go through the process, and then approximately two-and-a-half years later, the decision will be made on, from an environmental aspect, if the project is a go or no-go. Once again, it's a two-and-a-half-year process. And as I talked about when I first started here, is it's, there's always a danger when you engage the public very early in a project because we don't have a lot of information. Some of the information we have, we have to keep, you know, close to the chest, so to speak. But we are trying to be as open and transparent as we can on this. So people know that there's a project coming. The one unfortunate thing is, we were instructed to put some signs up around the site. The signs gave the public the impression that we already had a permit and we had everything in place. We have none of that at this point in time. All we've got at this point in time is an idea. And the last slide is we, we will continue to work with the communities and we're, continue to work on a mutually benefit relationship. And obviously, we value, you know, the relationships we have with both First Nations and the municipalities. We've been, we've done about, I want to say, three or maybe four presentations to RDOS over the last couple of years. The one coming up this Thursday will probably be, it's going to be the exact same as what you've seen here, but you're going to have the major players there to ask some good questions on. And that is the presentation in a nutshell.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Bob Gibney. I think there might be a few questions coming from council. And I guess the first one that I have, just so people get the scope of this, my belief is that a megawatt is, would power a thousand homes?
A megawatt is, well, I'm going to try to do the math in my head. It's about a, see, fifty, if you do, you know, I think rather than to put a number out, I would rather be more comfortable coming back to you with something.
Okay.
But a megawatt is substantially more than power. For example, the, the Spirit Ridge up there, you know, that's running off of probably the whole, the whole thing, including the, the living spaces and the offices and everything. That's probably less than a meg for all that up there.
Okay, okay. There, there is a, there, I've seen numbers, you know, with all the site C and things like that, where they, there's a translation number there. And I just thought if we could get that number for the people that are interested, then we understand the, the size of the output, you know, that it's going to, it's going to power X number of houses. And then we can all, we can all understand what that means.
Yeah, the, see, a house, a normal house would take approximately five KVA, so you have to sort of work the math backwards. I'll get a number for you on Thursday.
Okay, super, super, I appreciate it.
Rather than having a number that I'm not so confident in.
I understand that. Wrong, wrong information.
It's like giving, it's like giving a, a budgetary estimate for a number, and that's all people remember.
Yeah. And I guess the, the second item was, that is one tall dam.
It is, but it's a big reservoir in there, too. It's a, it's a tall dam. It's, until you, you know, can understand the scope of it, it's, it's, it's a big dam.
Yeah, because you're almost at six-hundred feet.
Yeah. It's five-hundred and some.
Five, five-something.
Five-hundred and some foot there, yes.
Okay, Counselor Rhodes?
Well, thanks, Bob. I know you're, you're a proponent, a very positive guy about this kind of thing. I wonder if you could maybe just comment on, on the inevitability of the opponents to it. And just, and one other thing, I'd like to know who the intended recipients of the, the power are. And will any of that power cross our border into the US at all?
I'll maybe answer these questions backwards. The, the, both the capacity and the energy from that facility, if it were to be constructed, that would go into the open market or onto some contractual agreements that we may have. And it very well could go across into the States. It will be, it's like a typical business, you will sell to whatever the market will bear and whoever can, can buy it. Right now, in this province, and this is part of the difficulty, is electrical generation and power is at a, is there an abundance of, of generation and power in B- British Columbia? Like, even our own company, Fortis BC, if that dam were in operation today, we wouldn't have a market for it. So that is part of the risk assessment, is like, what can the market bear? As far as the, as people that are perhaps not as eye keen about the idea, you know, there will be an impact with the reservoir, obviously. And when you start doing anything that impacts rivers and flow and things like that, you do get people that are, have their own view on that, on, on that. I know First Nations, we have not got a lot of feedback from them. I know previously they were in favor of it. I know the First Nations in, on the south side of the border seem to be keen on the idea. As far as people coming out and saying the dam was a bad thing, it's anybody's guess. It really is. I think, you know, it comes down to, a lot of it comes down to recognizing the need for it and whether people feel it's legitimate and the impact to the environment. But the downstream impact is all positive. Anything that could be construed as having a negative impact is right, right at the site, we have a reservoir. But then, once again, that will turn into a recreational opportunity. You're going to have a dam there, fishing and things like that.
Counselor McCordough?
Do I answer all your questions? If I may ask?
Yeah, I was more concerned about the recipients and, you know, that crossing the border thing with that power. I just, you know, you know how you generate in one country and it answers another, yeah, I just.
Well, you know, we, we get a lot of our power, some of our power from the state side. And for me to stand up here and say that that power would be solely for domestic use and what the percentages, I, I couldn't do that. Like, it's a market situation, so.
I understand that, yeah.
Counselor McCordough?
Thank you. Well, thank you. I'm, I, I remember a couple of years ago, hearing about a dam project that was on the Samilkamene in the States, south of Karamia, some costum, and there was concerns about flooding. Could you comment on the status of that, if you know, and how that would be affected by this?
That, we would be working independently, whatever may happen in the States. I think the one, there was actually two potential dams down there. One was at Enlau, was it? The Enlau Dam, it's existing now, but the water's actually over the top of it. I'm not sure what, what the Americans are up to as far as, as any dams, they may or may not be considering down there.
Because the, the flow of the, of the Samilkamene could affect whatever they were planning to do. And I don't know how far that's got, that particular dam. Maybe it was shelved, I don't know.
I wouldn't want to comment, I don't have enough information.
I don't think they're ever truly shelved.
Yeah.
It's, it's shelved for, you know, it's, but it could vary, you know, fifty years down the road could appear again. But that was the one that was going to actually flood up into Canadian.
Yes.
That, that was, I don't think that was ever going to happen with First Nations and, and their recognition these days. That's, that's for sure.
Yeah.
And I guess, I guess on the downstream benefits, there has to be, it has to be very attractive for that, for the salmon fishery that, you know, we in Asoias and Asoias Lake experiences. But that, that avail, the availability to adjust the flow in, in when the salmon runs are happening in that August and August, September, when, when they're really coming, coming up, that would be great to be able to have those, that water reservoir behind the dam to assist in years of very, very low flow in the Okanagan River.
For the Okanagan River, yes. As you know, there's a, there's a old legend out there that if salmon come up the Samilkamene, the world will end. So the work time will be over, but hopefully we don't get salmon up the Samilkamene on the off chance it's correct.
Yeah.
But as far as, I, I'm not a fish guy, I don't know. You know, all these type of questions will be, you know, dealt with through the more intensive environmental review.
Sure. Counselor Ryan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob, let's assume that the project goes ahead. Would there be a need for additional power lines and so on from the dam? And if so, where, what, what exists now and what, where would they, where would they?
Currently, currently, right now, BC Hydro delivers transmission voltage to the, to the copper mine. I think it's a hundred-and-thirty-eight KV line. I shouldn't say that, but it looks like one-thirty-eight. So I would, that would be the inner tie point there, and then would get into the, into the BC Hydro system.
So it would go into their, into that grid?
Into that grid, yes. Yeah, because we, building a transmission line in the Okanagan or in the Samilkamene, that's, yeah, that's a tough, that's a tough call, you know. That's a tough, tough thought.
I would think, I would think tougher than the dam, actually.
Quite possibly, yes.
I don't know if you, you're not, I don't know if there's going to be very many transmission lines ever built through, through the Okanagan again.
Yeah.
Certainly a lot of opposition, even on cellphone towers and things like that. There's certainly a lot of public input onto it, so. Anything else from council? Well, I'm looking forward to the Thursday meeting and get a, get a little more science on it. You did say that the reservoir was twenty kilometers long behind there?
Yes, approximately twenty kilometers.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you have any other questions that, that pop up, I'm sure Stu can carry them forward. Are you going to be there, Stu?
Yeah, I'll be.
Carry them forward. And you get, if you have more technical questions, you know, you're going, you're going to have the right people there.
Sure.
And on your question on a meg, I was doing the math in my head while we were talking. I'm going to say, based on a five KVA per home, you're probably looking at a little over two-hundred homes on a megawatt.
On a megawatt?
Yeah, so.
So this was fifty?
It could be fifty, yeah.
Yeah. It could be fifty megawatt. Fifty times two-hundred. Do you have the math? Okay, so, and, and again, I find that valuable for people understanding the, really what, what that dam means in terms of powering houses. We all can figure that out.
Yeah. And then one thing, too, you know, with this rather intense public engagement that we'll be going through, there's going to be ample opportunity for both people, for people both pro and perhaps not as keen on the project to come out and, and voice their opinion on it. I will say that this project is very economically, you know, fragile. It's, it could go, it couldn't go.
Is it?
So, this, this might be, another project is put on hold for a while. I know back when Prince Lightning Power was their own entity, it was brought up then, and that goes back almost twenty years.
Right, right. Well, I guess if you, yeah, when you don't really have a solid market for it, putting it onto the, onto the open market, that has a risk factor, for sure.
That's right, and it's just the cost of the facility alone. If the costs escalate, then it's probably going to be put on hold for a while. But if that's all the questions, I'd like to thank you for your time and see you on Thursday.
Thanks for bringing this presentation to the town of Asoias.
Always, always nice to you. Any other questions, or anything generally with power? Two-system rate increases.
Oh, no.
Don't get us started.
Well, I will tell you this, if you are going to replace on what we call the RCRs, encourage you to, to send communications to your MLA.
Okay.
Because the government's going to, quite frankly, is they're going to have to change your energy policy to make some changes on this. We're not, you know, we've, we've made submissions to the Utilities Commission on numerous occasions, and you just keep telling us to send in another report at the end of the year. Right now, it's sort of in a bit of a lull because, you know, the winter heat's off and that. But it's going to come back again in fall. And one good thing is although the farmer exemption, the farm exemption for that was re, was extended. So if you do have anybody that has a farm, they should be applying to, for the, for the better rates for their farm.
Well, thanks for that, and thanks for giving me that information at the SOGA conference because I am on, my house is on electric baseboard. So I am one of those two-tiered people that really, really felt the, felt the bite of the, of the probably improperly gauged two tiers of where that second tier cuts, cuts in at, so.
Well, my own opinion on this is that when they did it, when, when this rate was, not the rate being formatted, but when the government came up with their conservation rate, they, they either missed it or they didn't put enough weighting on the fact that if people only have electrical energy for all their, for their heating and everything, and they don't have a, you know, natural gas, access to natural gas or an alternate energy source, you're, you know, it doesn't matter what you do, you're still going to pay. It's unfortunate, but currently, in my opinion, that's the way it is.
Well, I guess, I guess back when my dad, dad built the, the building and he, he listened to the advertisements of live better electrically.
Took it to heart.
And I think we heard that from, from West Cootney Power and Light at the time.
Well, I think, you know, it was true, it still is true. You know, you look at the rates, but all of a sudden, if you're paying a whole bunch more than you used to and you're, and it's the same thing, and you've really maximized your conservation within your home, you're, and if you want to go electricity, you're going to, that's the cost that comes with it currently. Unless you can get Linda to change, change somebody's mind. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, thanks a lot, Bob. Okay, well, that's the end of our, of our agenda items, so motion.
Move to adjourn.
Counselor Ryan Rhodes, all in favor? We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody on Granicus.